Meeting should come to order. Sue, we'll have roll call.
Britt?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
McCain? Uh, I know she's here. Brenda? Okay. I can see she's here. It's just she can't answer right now. Uh, Wertz?
Here.
Hyen?
Here.
Johnson? Uh, did we lose Julie? Hmm. Oh, there she is. Okay. Rust?
Here.
And Handfelder?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Uh, let's say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Sue, do we have any, uh, letters that you need to read for public comment? Or is anyone wanting to, uh, comment on Zoom?
We have, uh, no public comments submitted.
Okay. So we move on to the omnibus agenda. The following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote. Are there any items that you wish to pull? Second call, any items you wish to pull? From the omnibus agenda. If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
So, okay, you have a motion to approve and second, the, uh, approval of the omnibus agenda. Roll call.
Wertz?
Here, yes.
Handfelder?
Here.
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Word, uh, Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Informational items. Uh, Dr. Traska, are you in charge of that or is Lori still going to do that?
No, I, I will, uh, I'll be in charge of that. And what, what I'm going to do on this one is certainly if there are any uh, individuals on the call who would like to highlight anything in items N through R, please go ahead and do that, uh, related to, or at least N through Q, please go ahead and do that related to grants or contracts, um, or if the board has any questions on that, we can certainly direct to those individuals to, uh, provide any additional insights. If, if not, I'm going to jump to S. I, I don't have any other announcements. But in terms of presentations, what I wanted to do is just take a, a short moment and first of all, thank everyone for the absolute warm welcome to, uh, Lewis and Clark. It's, it's been a tremendous first three weeks. I've had the opportunity to, uh, get out and about a little bit and have had a chance to meet, uh, many, if not, I think all of our legislators, um, many of our mayors, been out and visited many of our sites, our locations out in our communities. Tomorrow I head off to East St. Louis and, uh, meet with the team there. And really my purpose is to really just understand, uh, how things are working at those areas, better understand the, uh, connectedness back to our campus. And then also look at ways in which we can explore opportunities to expand access for our students, um, in those areas as well as start thinking about ways in which we can connect even more broadly to our rural communities, um, that we serve. You know, I'd also certainly like to extend a thank you to the executive team, uh, for their leadership and their guidance as well. I mean, I've, I've called on many of them often to, uh, you know, just help me begin to acclimate to the culture and, uh, really understand what their expectations are. Part of that process has been, and I've also asked the board, uh, these questions, is I'm really interested in what we are looking at starting, stopping, and continuing to do as an institution. And I'm pulling feedback in from, from our stakeholders, both internal and external. And by this Friday, I'll send a message out to our entire campus, really seeking their feedback and perspective. The purpose of asking those questions is really to help begin framing and informing a revitalization of the strategic plan as we begin to move forward. So looking forward to that feedback as it comes. And then on November 6th, I'll have an all-team meeting, which is what I'll call them, and just really pulling the full campus together via Zoom, uh, to begin sharing what thoughts and perspectives are coming back and really outline our process to the team. So, um, it's been a great first three weeks, everyone, and I'm just grateful to be here. I'm grateful for everyone, um, really helping me and, uh, providing me the perspective and insights that, that I feel are important as we move forward. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it at that, not to kind of ramble on, but just thank you. I'm looking forward to our work together in, uh, the many, many, many years to come. So, um, any questions or thoughts for me at this point? Um, otherwise, I'm happy to, uh, uh, yield my time back to Chairman Hyman.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, it's been fun meeting with you. We've met several times and getting to know each other better each time. So, that's good. Any questions from the board? Any member?
We do have a board retreat on Friday, so I look forward to, uh, seeing all of you then as, as we begin our discussions more broadly about our strategic thinking and planning. So.
Okay, if we're done with informational items, then we move to discussion items. Construction project status report. Is there any report on that from Lori or anyone?
Chris Paulda was going to be on the line and maybe able to provide some insights there for any questions. Or Mary can chime in on that one?
Um, yes, the, uh, construction report is in your board book and, um, it does, uh, show the latest information that I have available on both of those projects. It's just the projects are backlog through CDB, so it's just taking time to get through it. We're hoping that the main complex foundation improvement project can, uh, go through the bid process and be approved through the CDB board as of December 9th. And then the Haskell Hall fan coil replacement, it is at nearly 50% design, design development. So we are moving forward on each of those. It's just slow progress.
Okay, are there any questions from the board or Dr. Traska?
Yeah, I, this is Kevin. I do have a question for, for Chris, I guess. Now, I, I don't, I hesitate to say this because I don't want to jinx it. But we do have obviously a lot of work to be done there in the, uh, the historic structures and that. That's that part of that $37.5 million that we're, that we're waiting on, I guess. I hope we're just waiting on it. But on the outside chance that we don't ever see that money, do we have any sort of a backup, backup plan of, of what to do and when to do it?
Um, a backup plan at that level? No. What I do is, I think, and I think I've shared it with you, is I am keeping a running list of deferred maintenance. As we are aware of things, we try to keep that in a priority order and address it as it comes up. Kind of like you mentioned, we are waiting for that 37.5 million, but at times things may come up to where we have to fix them. If we can't control the temperature in a certain part of the building, we, we have to repair that. So, um, we're trying not to Band-Aid things. We're trying not to spend, uh, money unnecessarily, knowing that this is hopefully on the horizon, but, um, we do keep that running list and just make sure, again, we're keeping things in a priority order and addressing things as we absolutely need to.
Okay, good.
And, you know, I'll, I'll chime in there too. I, I have had a chance to meet with, uh, several of our legislators and, um, setting up a meeting in the very near future with Deputy Governor Ruiz, I believe, um, related to this very topic on the Commons project and the 37-ish, .5 million dollars. So, hoping that our name is on that list sooner than later, so we can begin moving forward and at least beginning to plan more accordingly once those dollars are, are actually seen. Um, which will take time, by the way. Once the, the dollars are allocated, you know, that, there, there's a process there, and I think we'd have to look at how we're going to back into that project, preparing it, um, engaging our architects, et cetera. So, um, but just more as an FYI that I have um, already been looking into how we may be able to move that forward and what the holdup arguably has been.
Did, uh, notice anything that where we could, uh, grease the wheels a bit or?
You know, these are dollars that are approved by the Illinois Community College Board and, uh, you know, those dol- I mean, we're, we're in the pool, but we just, it just hasn't been published. And arguably, one of the perspectives I heard is that it's just a large amount, so it, we, we, we may just be in our own separate announcement, so to speak. So hopefully, hopefully we hear soon. Again, I'm, I'm going to have a conversation with Deputy Governor and really talk a bit about us and our vision and directions and just kind of nudge him to say, where are we on this so that we, as an organization, can start to plan more accordingly and what we need to get done? So, and I'll keep the board informed and everyone else collectively on where we're at with that once I hear, so.
Any other comments from anyone? If not, we move on to the action items. You, approval of grant and sponsored contract opportunities. Uh, page, pages 644 through 653. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
And Brenda's second. Is there a discussion with regard to any of the grants or sponsored contract opportunities? If not, we call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item V under action items. 2021 dash 2022 academic calendar, page 654. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, made the motion. Dwight's second. Is there any discussion about the academic calendar for 2021 and 2022?
Do we usually approve this, uh, in October or is it usually approved earlier?
Um, it, it's approved somewhere around this time in the fall. Sometimes it depends on when we complete it, if it goes to September or October. And it, this, this calendar is really driven by where the holiday falls. So this calendar is most similar to the calendar we had in 2010, 2011.
Any other discussions or questions? If not, call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Motion approved. Item W under action items, student academic fees for 2021, 2022, pages 655 through 656. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, Dwight, is there a second? Was that Bob?
Second.
Or Brenda? Okay, Brenda, there you go. Is there a discussion about the academic fees?
So I just have a question. If somebody could give a, give a little brief, brief discussion of how this is reviewed and arrived at. I mean, not really in, you know, not in depth, but kind of at a high level.
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. Um, so every year we ask the program coordinators to look at their current fees. And kind of the structure behind the fees is certain courses who have additional materials necessary. I mean, think of welding and all the steel that they have to purchase for that program. I think of the, the art studio courses where the instructors want certain materials for those students and create kits. So we attach a fee to a course. So every year those are reviewed by the program coordinator. And you'll notice here that, that the good news is sometimes these fees go down. And if you'll notice, some of the business, um, fees went down and that's based on some publishers' materials. There's a, there's a push away from bookstore purchases toward customized published materials that instructors can, um, create for their students. And the beauty of this is if you are on financial aid, you sometimes have to wait well into when the semester starts to be able to purchase extra things you need for your classes. And so these are just part of paying for the class. They're covered by Pell. They would be covered by most scholarships. And so it, it really helps the students in the long run, but we try to be very mindful of the amounts of these fees and look to not just increase them, but to decrease them when we can.
I have a question. Uh, were there many, uh, classes, new classes offered? Because it looks like, uh, there were zero from last year, but now we have some fees for, for example, uh, process, uh, or process technology. There were like three of those.
Yes, the instrumentation and controls and the process ops, um, those, the equipment, um, gets a lot of use. And so sometimes a fee has to be instituted in order to keep the equipment maintained. Hugh Swinski's on the call. Do you want to add to that one?
Sure. Sure. At first we also had a grant and so we had grant funding for that program when we started it. The grant is gone. And so now those, those, um, fees are required to, like Jill said, to, to continue to update and, and replace expendable supplies.
So, so you're saying that all these are, were programs we already had were just, uh, gone from, uh?
There, there was no fee attached to the course historically. And part of that was because of the grant. And now there's a small fee attached.
Okay, okay. When, I have a question with regard to like new courses, because we're talking about that possibility. How, tell us about that. You, you, uh, who, who designs the, uh, the programs, who decides on it? And is the board included in, in this tr- travel? Because I don't like surprises. Like we get to a board meeting and say, hey, we've got, you know, 500 new courses and it's only going to cost us a million dollars to do that. Uh, just vote yes, you know? Uh, so tell us about the process.
Okay, sure. We'll make sure that doesn't happen. Um, you know, and one thing we're working on is, is a more systematic streamlined process. And I know that's on, um, Dr. Traska's list and it's on my list. And we, we've already had a discussion about that. But the current process, it, I'll use medical assisting, for example. Um, we had a faculty member interested who was teaching in office technology, interested in expanding our offerings to medical assisting because of some peers she knew working in the field, medical assistance and office technology or have some relationship. And so we did a labor market scan and we, we had a group and I think that's our aim is to have another committee who's going to be doing this. But we have a group of people who will look at the labor market data. We don't want to create a program where students won't get jobs or won't get jobs that make a living wage. So we review the labor market data. Then we have to go through a very extensive review with the ICCP. It's called a Form 20. Sue's probably done more of those than I have because she deals with more career programs than I do, but it's a very exhaustive review of why do you need this program? How much will it cost? Who will teach it? That Form 20 goes to the board, um, for, for approval before we even ask the ICCP to approve the program. But we would certainly involve the board prior to that. I, I know, um, you know, think of when we started truck driving and I know Julie Johnson had, had maybe a connection and certainly Dwight in terms of trucks we might be able to get. And I know Dwight, um, was a big part of that. So, I mean, the board needs to be involved for more than one reason in terms of approval, but because you folks have so many contacts in the community and I think can help us out with that. But it's a, it's a very extensive vetting process and it's got to make sense for us. It's, we've got to be able to afford it and it's got to be something that can create, um, graduates who can get jobs i- in our community.
Does that include what if we need new facilities or expanded facilities? Is that part of the process also?
Absolutely. Um, it's a, it's a huge part of the process. There are so many, you know, there are some programs out there now that have some labor market data. I, I know when, um, um, Hickey College went out of business a few years ago in St. Louis, they had a Vet Tech program. And, um, I, I was not really involved in these discussions, but I, my, my understanding is they were willing to essentially hand the program off to us like the instructor. And we maybe could have purchased some of the equipment for a reduced cost, but the, the issue of facility was an issue. And the cost benefit ratio turned out to not show that it would have been a good move on our part to create the Vet Tech.
I think another factor, sir, is, you know, as Jill mentioned, um, really looking at high wage, high demand programs where there's gainful employment for graduates. And I think we need to take a hard look at what that process looks like, both developing, I mean qualifying and then developing and ultimately new program. And then also the review process for those programs and being sure that they remain feasible and viable. I think to your very first point of the question is, I think from a, if, if, you know, there, there, there will be an ongoing point where as an administrative team, we'll keep you updated on any sorts of developments like this. So, by the time, for example, the request to adopt a new program comes to you as, for a vote, there will have been several opportunities to vet that and have discussions openly with the board in meetings. Because I think that feedback's going to be critical. Uh, so, yeah, but just wanted to chime in there, but thank you, Dr. Lane, for your, for your assistance there as well.
Yes, thank you for the, uh, information. It's always nice to review that. Uh, make sure we're all on the same page. I, I don't know if it's appropriate to answer this question tonight. Uh, and if it isn't, uh, I would hope we'd have some more information by November meeting. And that has to do with our diesel program. It's extremely important and there's a lot of, I guess, let's call it balls in the air as facilities and approval and all of those things. And are we at a stage where we can report on that or should we just take some more time and, and, uh, maybe have a report in November or December?
Personally, I would feel more comfortable with someone, I mean, I, I'm not prepared to, uh, present on the, any level of investment we would make in that program at this point. So I would, I would request that we bring that to the November or even potentially the December board meeting. That gives us a little bit of time to really take a hard look at what the feasibility is of making an investment.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, besides, uh, so the diesel technology is in, is in the pipeline, so to speak. Are there any other courses in, in the pipeline?
I can, um, I can jump in and, and, um, talk about that. Um, right now, no. Right now, um, we have an NSF grant for diesel. And so there's three courses attached to that grant and those are under development right now. There, um, this year in the first year of the grant, um, the requirement is to develop those three courses. There'll be a small certificate attached to the auto program. Uh, but other than that, no, that's, uh, that's where we, we stand right now with new programs. We have some ideas, but, um, none, none to that level of development.
It doesn't, and it, I think you told us one time, it takes about close to two years from the very beginning to actually implementing. And the, from the first, uh, idea to the actually implementing the courses, right?
Yeah, depending on the size. If it's a small certificate like this diesel certificate, we could probably get it done in a year. Um, if it's a whole new program, it can take, it can take a year and a half to two years.
Chairman, we still have a motion on the table, right?
Yes, we're still discussing, yes. Any other comments or discussions or questions or information that we need? If not, I call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yeah.
Motion approved. Next action item, X, fiscal year 22 holiday calendar, page 657. Is there a motion to approve that calendar?
Motion.
Okay, Bob made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, okay.
Okay. Uh, is there a discussion with regard to the fiscal year 22 holiday calendar? If not, call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay. Action item Y, resolution 21 dash 2, tax levy pursuant to 110 Illinois Community College. That's 805 slash 3 days, 14 dot 3, page 658. Yeah, is there a motion to approve resolution 21 dash 2, tax levy?
So move.
Okay. Uh, made a motion to approve, uh, need a second.
Second.
Have a second to approve the motion. Okay, is there any discussion regarding the, uh, resolution, uh, number 21 dash 22? Which, for anyone that's listening, the rate is 28.55, which is the same rate as last year.
Yeah, I'd just like to say a, a few words about our, uh, finance committee meeting we had at noon today. And of course, this was a, a big topic of discussion and there was a lot of very, I think, very good productive, uh, positive back and forth, uh, discussion on this. On the ones, well, I, I don't know. I think I'll try to summarize it maybe a little bit, but I won't get, really get the points quite right. But, um, on the one hand, uh, we know that there are some unknown expenses related to COVID, for example, and related to the, uh, funding our, our technology expenses. On the other hand, we have, uh, a, a declining enrollment and yet taxes are staying, uh, about as high as they were. So, no, so there's, there's very valid arguments on both sides of that. And you know, I think there was, there was, um, some discussion, well, maybe we should go ahead and, and do the whole 2905. Go back to what, what we did before and then, or whatever, 29, 12909, I guess it is. But anyway, so I don't know. I, I, I'm making the motion. Certainly not out of, out of shooting from the hip. I'll say that.
Well, I, you know, just like to add that I was informed that we get, uh, we're getting some money for that we get, we're getting some money from for this this disease, it's COVID-16. And I don't know, Mary, maybe you can give us the numbers. But someone was saying it was around a million and a half that we may be expecting or have received a part of the money for COVID-16. Is that correct?
We have received CARES funding, federal funding, a little over 1 million that had to be dispersed directly to students and a little over 1 million that is for the institution's use. We are, we have about 300,000 booked into fiscal year 20 with the remainder of that million to be used in fiscal year 21. We've also received just short of 300,000 in gear funding and that state money. And that is directed towards a lower income student and allowing them to return to school in this environment. And we have looked at a couple of items there. The big one being converting some classrooms to Benflex classrooms so that they have options to both learn in person or at home at their own flexibility as far as timing as well. And then we are filing, are hoping to file an insurance claim that will, the maximum that we can recover on that insurance claim is 500,000. And I'm meeting with the group later on this week, hopefully to iron out some details. But that is another pot of money that I'm hoping we could use to assist some of those areas, such as, I'm going to throw out just dining services for an example, that has had ongoing costs in staffing, but yet hasn't been able to build any sales. So that's what I have in my mind. But that's the main pots of money related to COVID.
So, Mary, if the difference between 2909 and the 2855, how many dollars that can, I know it doesn't, it matters on the
34.
Best value, but what kind of dollars difference does that make?
Yeah, we kicked that around a little bit, Dwight. It's, we think it's about 250,000 or so, maybe a little less. I remember that came up last year, too, that that reduction from 2909 to 2855 represented a belt tightening, so to speak, of something over 200,000. And so we live with that 2855. Our reserves are doing okay now. I mean, we're not, we're not eating into our reserves. So I feel, I feel comfortable that we can, we can hold that 2855. I would certainly hate to, hate to try to explain to the voters why we increased property taxes when it doesn't look like we need to. Also, I wanted to add on what, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but basically the million dollars or so that we got from the federal government and the, and the, hopefully the half a million or so that we're going to get from insurance is pretty much just to keep us whole. I mean, we have a, we're looking at a, I believe, a 10% reduction in our enrollment. And so that's, you know, that's part, I think it's part of the insurance claim and also part of the COVID money from the federal government. So it's not like we're, it's not like, the way I see it anyway, it's not like we're making money on the deal. We're, we just want to get our, cover our costs.
We have to have proven expenses on that. Dwight, to directly answer your question, the additional 4.09 cents, it's about 1,784,000 estimated.
Oh, yeah, right.
At the level that we, we brought forward last year, the 3.55, that meant about 1,550,000. So we'd be talking about a difference there of about 223,000 if they gave the state level.
Mary, this insurance claim, we were discussing having somebody assist us to do that. How did we accomplish that?
We actually put together a contract not to exceed $5,000 so that we could act on our own. And we're working with a company called Pixis. And they're basically, before we dig in real deep, they're taking a high level look to make sure that we had a claim, that we had the numbers there that would support going forward.
You had some assistance.
Yes, yeah. I mean, we've been submitting reports to them. We're awaiting the feedback. And they were going to identify specific invoices they'd like for us to pull and areas that we can focus on. I mean, the point that they made, which makes perfect sense, is there's no reason for us to put together a million dollar claim when the maximum we can recover is 500,000. We need to put together a $500,000 claim.
Thank you.
Chairman? Chairman? So I'd also like to bring up that we discussed in the finance committee meeting that if we did go for the maximum amount that we're allowed, which would be the 29.09, we're hoping that over the next few years that we can cut our tax levy rate because of the payoff of bonds. And so I like to look at the overall tax rate, levy rate for the college. And I'm hoping that we can cut it in other areas. And maybe we don't need to cut it in this area, especially in a year of uncertainty. So I could go either way. I mean, I'd be okay with leaving it the same. But I'm wondering if we should go ahead and request the max. And with the plan to supplement our other funds, for example, our tech funds, we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for all the technology money or expenditures. Maybe this would be part of that. So I don't know, maybe it's premature to cut this too much. But that's something that we discussed. And, you know, how, we're going to be lowering our tax rate, levy rate, by paying off bonds and lowering the overall debt of the college. Our interest and principal payments are going to be going down over the next five years, whatever. So we will be cutting the tax levy rate. Maybe we should not cut this one. I don't know. I want the board to think about that.
I would, I would chime in. And I think the discussion today was really good in the sense that, I mean, from a personal perspective, this is more of a long game. And I think the invariable cost of technology are, I mean, it's a very difficult one to put your arms around. It's a very nebulous thing. And even Jeff and I were talking about this today earlier in the morning. So, so one of the ideas would be these additional dollars, which, which I, you know, 223, I mean, I had 234 written down. These are all estimates, you know, could ultimately be sort of allocated specifically for technology, you know? So there's a specific direction that these dollars would go toward. It wouldn't be that we're asking for this additional money just to be absorbed in the general operating budget. And in one way we do that is we could also save those dollars because, you know, we're not taking out the tech bond. And so we have, I mean, I mean, this is the thing. So, so, you know, colleges generally have invested tremendously in infrastructure, physical infrastructure throughout history. Well, that's shifting a bit. It's now about technology infrastructure. And so, you know, when we think about growing the institution, broadening access and, you know, going back to the point made around new programs and new points of access, this is all grounded in having the state of the art technology. And so that's going to get scary. I mean, it's going to be an investment we're going to have to make. And so I look at us leaving money on the table, so to say, is something that we shouldn't do. Because the way I look at these dollars is a way to close the gap on what we need for technology and where we're at with technology. And to me, that's a longer term gain. And then in terms of, yes, in terms of the longer term strategy, absolutely, we're looking at, at, you know, taxes in a way which we're not putting that burden back on the taxpayer. We're looking at creating additional revenue streams through the technology that we would be able to invest in. So, I mean, there's a lot of dots that need to be connected, but the common denominator is investing in technology. And to me, even though, you know, 200 plus thousand dollars may not be an astronomical amount of money, it compounds. And so I think we need to consider taking the full amount and looking at this as being allocated toward investment in technology moving forward so that we can remain competitive and also explore new opportunities to broaden access for our students.
And I would add to that, that the reason we have this availability in the first place is because we are levying at an amount below the state average. If we were levying equal to or above the state average, we wouldn't have the opportunity to level, to levy an additional tax or a special tax or an equity tax. It's been called a number of different things for the years.
And I think another point, and Mary and I talked earlier and we're, what is today, Tuesday? So it must have been late last week. But, you know, and I don't know the exact numbers. I don't want to throw arbitrary numbers around. But I know at least a majority of the colleges across the state who qualify for this additional money or authorized for this additional money take advantage of it. So, you know, I'm not one to do what other people are doing just because they're doing it. But I do feel that because of the way we've operated, we do qualify for this additional amount or authorized for this additional amount. And we should, we should leverage those dollars to invest in technology infrastructure moving forward. And I suppose the board could, could, could say that, that, you know, if we do this, it could be specifically for XYZ. But correct me if I'm wrong, in XYZ technology.
I would want to check that out. I believe we could certainly designate it. I'm just not sure that we could put it in the restricted fund. I would need to check that out.
Any other comments with regard to the tax rate 28.55? That's, that's the resolution. If we pass this, then our tax rate will be 28.55.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So if a board member did not want it to be the 28.55 and wanted it to be another rate, we would want this motion to fail. And then we, are we able to put forward a new motion with a new rate? Is that how that would work?
Yes, that's my understanding. We, if this resolution fails, then we would have to set another rate because we need to set a tax rate at this meeting. Is that correct, Dennis?
Yes, that's correct. You could vote to oppose this motion and somebody can make another motion with a different rate.
Okay.
But since the motion's been made, it needs to be acted on.
Yes, exactly. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, what rate are we speaking of, Julie?
So in the resolution, it
Are you talking about going to the 29?
If, if we, if we wanted to. So my question is a matter of procedure. If the 28, if we fail this motion for the 28.55, I just wondered, you know, are we allowed to propose a new one tonight with a new rate? And yeah, the maximum would, that we could ask for would be 29.09. Or you could go less, you know, we could go something less. But I think
No, I understand that. I thought you had a rate in mind.
If I were going to propose a new rate, it would be the 29.09.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Britt? Yes. Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay. McCain?
No.
Wertz?
No.
Hyon?
Is this the tie vote?
I haven't voted yet.
No, it's not the tie vote. Go ahead.
Okay.
Hyon? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you're throwing me a curve here.
Me, too.
Well, Bob, you voted no. I'm going to vote yes then.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. Thank you very much. I'm going to vote my conscience and I'm going to say no.
Okay. So then that means the motion failed.
Okay, very good. Okay, now we need a motion for a new rate or a different rate or the same rate. It could be lower than 28.55 or somewhere between 28.55 and 2909. So
Mr. Chairman, may I may ask another question?
Yes.
At this point, or, okay. It's directed to Dr. Traska and Mary. What is the best rate for us?
29.09.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion. Julie, do you want, you were the firecracker behind this. So I'm, I'm going to put it on you to make the motion if you want to. You don't have to, but, you know.
I'll make the motion that we modify the resolution number 21-2 to have the rate be 29.09 in section one. And that would be the maximum rate with the understanding that the additional funds would be used for technology if possible.
I'll second that.
Brenda, okay, has been a motion made to set the tax rate at 2909. And a second has been made by Brenda. Any other discussions?
Yes, just I, not really discussing exactly, but I'm not sure Dr. Traska understands that although it is extremely, extremely unlikely, the voters could mount a, what's called a backdoor referendum to defeat this tax increase.
Yeah, I understand.
Is that something you see on the horizon, Kevin?
I think it's extremely unlikely. People don't pay that much attention, for one thing. And, and the, from a, just a practical standpoint, there's not enough time to mount a meaningful, a meaningful protest.
That possibility exists no matter what additional rate we use.
Yes, of course, yeah.
It's, it's not because of the, is it because it's an increase or is it affected by the amount of the increase?
It's because it's an additional tax.
If any increase over the 25 cents, there can be a backdoor referendum on that.
We'll have to put an opportunity for a petition out there. We'll have to publish a notice and allow for a petition. That's why we need 30 day window.
Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote at their tax rate of 29.09.
Britt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
No.
Sorry, I'm, Rust?
No.
Handfelder?
No.
Watson?
Yes, yes.
So motion carried.
Motion carried. Tax rate will be 29.09. Okay. I believe that concludes all of our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Take the motion to adjourn.
A second? A second?
Second.
Okay, second to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Thanks, Bob, I appreciate that. Stay up until midnight, okay?
Was that opposite from you?
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, all your participation and involvement and it was great, great meeting, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is, is the board retreat, is that going to be virtual or in person?
That's, that's virtual. The virtual retreat.
Okay.
Oh, I had a similar question, our, our next meeting on November the 10th is that, we should plan on that being by Zoom also, right, or virtual?
I would suggest plan it virtual unless, unless we have a signal that we could do it in person. I mean, I, I, I would recommend that, that's my opinion, but-
Yeah.
Dennis, I read your report, your advice on that, that this retreat still has to be an open meeting and I, I guess I was, always thought that we could have a retreat and discuss business, and of course, we wouldn't act on it without it being an open meeting. Could you address that to all of us and whoever's listening?
Yeah, you know, anytime a majority of, of the board or a majority of a quorum of the board gets together to discuss board business, that certainly has to be conducted in an open session, you have to have an agenda, keep minutes, that sort of thing, or exceptions from conducting your business in open session, one of which is self-evaluation practices as long as a member of a statewide organization for which you are a member, representative of a statewide organization for which you are a member is present. So in your case, in a community college case, that would be Illinois Community College Trustee Association, so if, say, Jim Reed, the executive director, was present to kind of lead a self-evaluation, then you could meet in, in closed session for, for those purposes. But since we're meeting without the assistance of Mr. Reed, a lot of boards do that, you know, we'll just meet in open session and, and those, we, we have to have public comment that anybody, I guess, that wants to sit in and listen as far as, you know, what the retreat is about, they have that opportunity. As I mentioned to Kevin in a text message today, if we were allowed to conduct our business in a retreat in closed session, public bodies would be having retreats every month. So, you know, to avoid the transparency of, of open meetings, so we would just call it a retreat and, and meet every month and that certainly would, would not be, would not be appropriate, so.
Well, is it law?
A lot of public bodies do this and, and they do meet in open session.
So there's no possibility of meeting and we can't act even in the, these retreats, we can't act, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But the discussion has to occur in open session unless we're discussing a, a matter that would otherwise be appropriate for executive session, closed session.
Okay.
But the retreat itself would be generally conducted in open session.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. Any other questions? See, Bob, we're going to hang out, hang out for you all night long.
Well, I know, it just keeps going on here.
I also recognize that Mr. Watson is celebrating a birthday today, that I learned.
Oh, we didn't have to talk about that.
Well, let's sing happy birthday to us. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Robert. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. It's been enjoyable spending the evening with all of you.
I bet you wish your-
How old are you? How old are you?
About 195.
It just feels that way, Bob.
Sometimes.
I bet you wish your hearing wasn't so good tonight, listening to that singing, huh?
Oh, I thought it was nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items we want to talk about, even though we're adjourned? Okay, it's been a good evening, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.